Welcome to the Monday, November 4th, 2024 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Tack?
Here.
Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Clemens?
Here.
Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Powers?
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Here.
Alderman Levert?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Alderman Walder?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The first item on tonight's agenda is comments by mayor, and I'm going to limit my comments to remarking on the fact that we've had apparently 7,000 people show up for early voting already, which is quite shocking, actually. But anyway, for those of you who haven't shown up, please remember to vote tomorrow. We will now move on to comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Good evening. I have two items under my report tonight. The first is someone who's quite familiar, I think, to everyone in the city council. I'm pleased to welcome Carol Summerfield, the Executive Director of the History Center of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. Carol's here tonight to highlight the History Center's upcoming exhibition about the history of Lake Forest war veterans and their experiences returning home. So Carol, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and the esteemed council. I'm pleased to be here. This exhibit is going to carry the story from World War I to today across several topics. The exhibit actually opens this Friday. You are all welcome to come at 2:00 PM, and we will also be open on Veterans Day because it seemed appropriate from 10:00 to 4:00. So why this subject? Part of what we're focused on is the fact that we are sandwiched between Great Lakes Naval Base and Fort Sheridan, and we also had the Glenview Air Base for a long time. And because of that, Lake Forest sort of had a front row seat to a lot of the changes that took place around the care and the treatment of veterans in America. We also had thousands of veterans that have moved through this area, thanks also on behalf of the American Legion Post 264, George Alexander McClintock, himself a war vet, which began the same year the American Legion began in 1919. So we'll be talking a lot about their contributions to veterans' treatments and their services in Lake Forest. This photo is a great one because it represents, this is Memorial Day in 1921, and that first row are our Civil War vets. So we have had Lake Foresters who have fought in every war since the Civil War. That, wait, let's go back for a second. This photo is the banquet that was held for the World War I veterans in 1919 over at the Durand Art Institute. So it gives you an idea of how represented Lake Forest is in most of these wars and across all brands of services. So one of the things that we are focused on, did we lower the mic? Yes, good. All right. One of the things that we focused on is the treatment of veterans and their medical services because it played an oversized role in Lake Forest and the area. So Fort Sheridan actually had a medical hospital between 1918 and 1920. They picked up service again during World War II. But predominantly, we have the James A. Level Federal Healthcare Center, which began in 1926 as the North Chicago VA Medical Center. One of the most interesting aspects of this medical center is that it is the very first partnership between Veterans Affairs, the Department of Defense, and it serves both active military-duty soldiers and veterans. Now, the exhibition will cover several topics, but the three big ones are veteran medical support. We really want to look at what has changed between World War I and today, and one of the most interesting aspects of it is after World War I, the American government was woefully underprepared for how many injured vets they were going to have. And so, within a year of the war ending, they ramped down 3,000 hospitals with the expectation that the Civil War hospitals that existed, all 18 of them, would pick up service. By 1921, they realized this is not going to work, and so they developed the Veterans Administration. The image on the right is actually from the Civil War to today, various forms of artificial limbs. One of the interesting side notes that you'll find in the exhibit as well is that 90% of the innovations that take place in prosthetic limbs comes out of the veteran services. They directly develop, research, and produce artificial limbs. The second part that we cover is the changing fiscal and educational support that veterans got. We talk about why the GI Bill comes about during World War II, how it supports people, what preceded it, and what evolved out of it, because the GI Bill ends in like 1952, and we have varying versions that expand beyond that. And then the other thing that we talk about, because it was a significant part of what took place in this area, was training and education. So this photo is at Fort Sheridan, and it was part of the workers' training program for injured vets. We, through what we did with Lake Forest College, there's a lot of programming that took place as well for vets returning from World War II. One of the things that always supports our exhibits are lectures, and we are going to begin with Captain James Hawkins, Jim Hawkins, who's going to talk about the veteran services and their transition today into the workforce and what programs we have for them. This exhibit runs through the end of March. I really hope you can come see it, and I want to thank you. This, by the way, is an ad that ran during World War II from Smith's Men's Market.
Are there any questions for Ms. Summerfield? Thank you for that fascinating.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next, I'd like to introduce Beth Pearson, the Manager for Strategic Partnerships for the Youth Conservation Corps. Beth, in her role, is always looking for opportunities to collaborate with other organizations and municipalities who share similar objectives that complement the Youth Conservation Corps. And those opportunities can include job placement and volunteer opportunities, anything that can help support the mission. I'll just note before I introduce her, or excuse me, invite her up to the podium that Beth is also a Lake Forest High School graduate and one-time president of the APT. So with that, Beth, I'd be happy to turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Jason. It's nice to see everybody, some familiar faces. I am very fortunate to have raised my kids in this community, and I've been very involved in the education industry, nonprofits in Lake County. I've worked in a couple of different nonprofits in North Chicago and Waukegan. Just about a year ago, I learned about and was lucky enough to start working for Youth Conservation Corps, which I had never heard of before I started working there just about. And I was surprised, given how involved I've been in that industry. So I wondered why. I wanted to share the story of Youth Conservation Corps with the people of Lake Forest because I know how generous Lake Forest is towards communities to the north of us. And I am very lucky that our Executive Director, Jennifer Yonan, is here to tell the story of YCC. So I'm going to hand it over.
Thank you, Beth. As Beth said, I'm Jennifer Yonan. I'm the Executive Director at Youth Conservation Corps, just celebrated six years in that role, and I feel very blessed to be able to serve my community where I was born, raised, and educated as well, and returning back and being able to work with the youth in our community. So Youth Conservation Corps has some interesting past, and am I in charge of advancing with that? Okay, very good. So these are just some of the images of some of the programs that we run and some of the youth that we serve. Our mission is to mentor and empower young adults to succeed through education and training in life skills, career pathways, and environmental stewardship. I'm going to focus a lot today on our Youth Build Program. It is one of three programs that we run in Waukegan. We're located on the northeast side of Waukegan, and the Youth Build Program is the largest number of youth that we serve at any given time. Our Youth Build Program is primarily funded through the U.S. Department of Labor in partnership also with AmeriCorps. So these are our core values at Youth Conservation Corps. I won't read them to you, but I will say that this is pretty much a consistent value throughout our organization, from staff to our members that we serve, as well as our Board of Directors. We have a long history in Lake County. So in 1974, there was a summer youth employment program started within the Lake County Forest Preserves, started by a gentleman by the name of Bob McCammon, and that partnership still exists today. We just celebrated our 50th year of serving youth in the summer conservation program. They work in the forest preserves around the county. In 1994, when Bob retired from the forest preserve, he started a private, or a separate 501(c)(3), known as Youth Conservation Corps. And in 2001, so it was a seasonal program, and until 2001, when we added the Youth Build Program component, where we're serving opportunity youth that are ages 16 to 24 years old. We have a number of different programs, and we've served over 1,800 young adults through our programs. As I mentioned, Youth Build is our largest program. We help young people who are disengaged from education and employment finish their high school credentials. They earn either a GED or high school diploma. Our primary career pathway is in construction and the construction trades, because we all know we're going to need a lot more young people going into those areas. We also have a secondary, smaller career pathway in IT careers. We also teach life skills, and we also do community service through our AmeriCorps obligations. We do a ton of community service, and Beth can talk about some of the projects we've done that you might be familiar with in this area. We also operate a graduate program. So we have a four-to-six-month program for anyone who does have a high school diploma or GED. Maybe they've come through our Youth Build Program, or maybe they come to us after a different program, and they can get hands-on construction and forestry experience. So I'll talk a little bit more about forestry at the end. Construction experience, those young people who are in our construction crew in the graduate program are actually building affordable housing for low-income families. We're working on a brand-new building right now in Zion, a three-bedroom, two-bath home. As I mentioned, the summer program in conservation still exists today, and it is open to youth from all over the Lake County area. They go online and apply through the forest preserve sometime around February and March. Those applications go up on the website. Then there is actually a lottery drawing for the summer program crews. There are currently four crews of six members, and then a fifth crew that are specifically selected from Zion, North Chicago, and Waukegan to serve in the summer program. Our Youth Build Program, as I said, we serve about 30 to 45 opportunity youth, ages 16 to 24, throughout the year. That's our year-round program. We have a five-day-a-week, six-month education and training program. We work on, as I mentioned, their credentials are they're earning their GED or high school diploma. They also earn an OSHA-10 certificate, HBI Pact in construction, that stands for Home Builder Institute Pre-Aprentice Ship Construction Training Certificate, and the CompTIA certification, which there's two sections of that. One is fundamentals, and one is A+ that young people can earn. Those are Department of Labor-certified, recognized, industry-recognized credentials that are stackable and portable anywhere throughout the United States. And then, as I mentioned, our construction program members are building affordable homes for low-income families, and that also counts as community service when we're working on those projects. So as I mentioned, opportunity youth are youth that are not enrolled in school and are not working, and their future is typically limited by the lack of educational credentials, life skills, and work skills. And currently, in the United States, there's approximately 5 million opportunity youth that are disconnected from education and employment. The return on investment in investing in opportunity youth is huge. Over the lifetime of the taxpayer's, a 20-year-old that doesn't go back to education or employment can cost $236,000, and the social costs are even higher, as you can see, over $700,000 per youth that don't return to education or employment. So I mentioned about our Youth Build Program. Here are just some of the other bullet points. Career readiness and placement, obviously, with the Department of Labor being our primary funder. Those are the key outcomes that we're striving for. We also do a lot of work around leadership development. We teach life skills, communication, problem-solving. They have leadership opportunities within our Youth Policy Council. It's sort of like a student council. The members elect the leadership themselves, and they become advocates to the staff for the things that the students would like to have or see in the program, community service opportunities that they'd like to see and work on, and also some field trip opportunities for some cultural enrichment as well. These are a few of our community service projects. We're typically on a Friday afternoon somewhere in the community. A lot of times, we're spending our community service hours in Waukegan during Operation Clean Sweep, cleaning up alleys and different areas of the community, removing graffiti, picking up trash, clearing up branches and debris, and sometimes we're doing beach cleanups just down the shoreline from here. The photo on the far left is also one of our members picking harvest. Those are potatoes that, we have 21 raised garden beds surrounding our building in Waukegan, and we have organic produce that's available not only for our members, but also for the folks in our, pretty much our fresh food desert in our community. So we work on career readiness skills. We do resume building. We do interviews. We do mock interviews. So if anyone's interested in volunteering to do some mock interviews, we do that. And then we help young people either get ready for the next step in their career, maybe a military career, or a post-secondary education. And then, after the young people finish the program in six to nine months, there's an entire year of follow-up after they're placed in those next opportunities. So they have the support services available to come back to YCC at any time and work on any additional skills or polish up their resume. And we check in with them throughout the first 12 months after they exit the program to make sure that they are fully employed or going to school or engaged in some type of productive activity. These are just some photos of our hands-on construction instruction, building in house, building in our workshop. This is the last home that we completed in Zion. It was on Gilboa Avenue, and we completed that. And now we're working on a home exactly the same blueprint in Zion on Elizabeth Avenue. So our impact is, you know, increasing wages and lifetime earnings for our young people. We're producing a cycle of empowerment, particularly when we bring back our alumni that have finished the program, and they come back to be staff members. We currently have five staff members working on our staff that are alumni of our program. We help them finish high school and create new pathways for them, fix up affordable housing in lighted areas, putting them back on the tax rolls, creating a more positive outlook and healthy lifestyles, and then producing a positive culture around them with our values and the things that we do to support them holistically so that we can reduce recidivism for our young people. So these are just a couple more things about our education program. The young man down on the bottom in the cap and gown is an honors graduate from CLC last May. His name is Stephen Panos. Stephen is serving as a full-time staff member in our program, and he is enrolling in North Park University's School of Business and Nonprofit Management next semester. We are just about to launch our brand-new program funded through the Core Network. It is a federally-funded program in urban and community forestry. So this is a three-year grant, and it is a one-time grant. So we are launching this as a pilot program to bring a new career pathway into our Youth Build Program in three years. So we're getting started with the urban and community forestry program, which will require high school education credentials to get into the program, but it can also be considered a placement for some of our just recent graduates who finished the Youth Build Program. So we have a lot of young people in the community who work for family businesses or family companies that work outdoors, and we have a lot of young people who are interested in doing that. So this is a nice, new career pathway for those that like to get involved outside and working outside. So with that, I'll turn it back to Beth to talk a little bit more about some of the ways that we engage with the community, our partners, and some community service projects. Thanks.
All right. I'll keep it very brief. My role is Manager of Strategic Partnerships, and in that role, I make connections, I make friends with other organizations that have similar missions or whose missions overlap with ours. One of those partnerships that I believe Jennifer was alluding to is the Audubon Society of Illinois. So I wanted to mention that because if you're ever out in the open lands areas in Lake Forest or Lake Bluff, if you see bluebird houses out there, chances are they were built by our members. That's a partnership with YCC that we have done for the last couple of years. We have a bunch of unfinished birdhouses in our workshop right now, but soon enough, they'll be out there in the open lands areas. Just wanted to mention, I actually am not a Lake Forest High School graduate, but my children are, and my husband is. So I know deep in my soul what a wonderful high school it is. My oldest son just graduated from college, and I come from a perspective that's very college-oriented, just by nature of having my kids go through the high school. And the previous organization that I worked for in Lake County was a college access program. College isn't for everybody, and YCC is a wonderful alternative for lots of people in our community for whom high school, I mean, college is not necessarily in the cards for reasons of choice and reasons of, out of people's control. And it's been wonderful to work there and see the immediate impact a program has on young people's lives. So if you ever want to learn more, just give me a call. I believe George is going to give you information about YCC. I'm happy to answer any questions. And that's it.
Thank you so much. What a lovely presentation. I was just curious, as you were going through the presentation and using the term "opportunity youth," how do these youth learn about joining this program?
A number of different ways. Some youth come to us through social workers at their high schools where they may be counseled out. Some come to us from the justice system.
Okay.
Some just from the neighborhood. They walk through the neighborhood. They see our sign. Many come to us through family connections who may have gone through the program, word of mouth. So yeah, there are lots of different ways.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the question.
That was my question.
Oh, okay.
Are there others? Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. I may suggest, for those that were here for the two community spotlights, maybe we take a minute to allow them to leave. Of course, you're always welcome to stay.
All right. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Is there anybody who would like to address the council at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. The first report is from the Audit Committee. This will be presented by Mark Dillon, Audit Committee Chair. This is the Audit Committee Report and Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That's a mouthful. For those of you who stayed, this is the dry part. Numbers, so. Yeah, I am Mark Dillon. I am one of the Audit Committee members. I have been living in Lake Forest since 1997 in Ward 1, or in the first ward. I have three children who all graduated from Lake Forest High School, and I started my civic trek upon retirement about, oh, a few years ago. I started first with the Senior Resource Commission, and the trek led me ultimately to the Audit Committee. And I think now I'm on my fourth or fifth year, and Elizabeth keeps telling me whatever that is, somewhere I'm not that. But this is our annual looksee of what the finances are, what the Audit Committee does. Not a lot of people in Lake Forest know about the Audit Committee. So we're going to start on what we do, who we are, our financial reporting, but most importantly, what we look for in our feedback and what we do during our four meetings. So to start with, the committee itself gets its charter from the council. We are the oversight body for the city during the preparation of the annual report and the annual audit. We do have, however, we've not had the opportunity, and I look forward to it, we will do independent reviews that are requested by the mayor and the council. We meet four times a year. Those meetings are right in here. And we meet January, April, July, and October. We review the city's cybersecurity actions. That's new for us. We started to go into the cybersecurity last year, and I think we will keep expanding that as we go forward. I'll talk about it a little later. We solicit RFPs for the external auditor reviews. We get RFPs. We look at those RFPs, and the committee then makes a recommendation to the council as to a choice for the external auditor. We review also the financial statements and the business of the various foundations that are connected with the city. Those foundations are as up here, the Senior Citizens Foundation, Croya Foundation, the Police Foundation, Parks and Recreation Foundation, Ragdell, and the Gordon Community Center. Who we are, it's really a collective of who we are. We are the Audit Committee, however, is five of us, myself, Brian, I can't read that, Brian Durkin, Fritz Hirsch, Joy Laracy, and Robert Nowlan. Last year at this time, we were too short, and so we were kind of scrambling. So this year, we had our first full contingent starting in July, so we will continue on in that vein. It's probably not important that we are at the top. We depend on and look to guidance from the city finance department. And a lot of the finance departments over here, Elizabeth Hollig, Diane Hall, Mark Gregoris, Jimmy Scott, Sarah Hartnett, Claudia Austin, Maria Joseph, and a new person, Cynthia Lawrence. This, then in turn, we also have ex-official members of the mayor, the finance chair, and the city manager. That said, I invite any of you who want to attend the Audit Committee to come. It's a very interesting time. We have quite a few good discussions, and so I look forward to having you all come to our next meeting in January. And of course, the fourth, the part of our group is Baker Tilly, led by Joe Lightcap, who I think has been the PIC for maybe four or five years now. Here's where it really comes back to the finance department. This is really very interesting. There is a group called the Government Finance Officers Association, GFPA, and for the 45th consecutive year, we have been awarded the Achievement in Finance Reporting. We, Lake Forest, has been, the city of Lake Forest, has been awarded that. For the third time, we've received the Popular Annual Financial Report, and for the ninth time, we've received the GFPA 25 Annual Budget Report, Budget Award. Interestingly enough, several years ago, about 350 out of 85,000 participants, 85,000 cities in the United States, received this Triple Crown, which is the one over in the right-hand corner, the lower right-hand corner. That's 0.4% of cities in the United States that get that recognition, and Lake Forest is one of those. So that's why we really stand on the shoulders of our finance department. Now for the good part, Baker Tilly Audit. The audit, once again, as expected, is a clean audit. In other words, everything is presented fairly as far as the auditor Baker Tilly is concerned. There were no significant discrepancies or material weaknesses. What's interesting, as far as I'm concerned, their time and costs came in per their letter of agreement with the city of Lake Forest. I think that's excellent. For the second year in a row, a lot more folks from the Department of Finance have been involved, do primarily do this to a really good succession plan that the department has put in place. And so they all have gained valuable experience with Baker Tilly on preparation of the audit. Someone mentioned before the financials, the comprehensive financial report, which is in your is in your packet. It is some 200 pages long. I hope you've all read it. We did discuss it at length at the last October meeting and it is quite impressive. I remember Ty Magnusson saying last year how much he learned from it and every year you learn something new. Now, our net position as a city increased $30 million over year over year. The city now has a net position, or if you will, in layman's business terms, net worth about approaching $300 million. And that's steadily growing over the years as we, as we go along. The $30 million increase in the net position from a balance sheet point of view primarily came, came from capital assets, an increase of $29 million, and we'll get to that in just a second. If I go to the capital assets increase, part of that $30 million is this $28 million increase in capital assets. The primary driver of that is the $12 million grant from the state IDOT for the storm sewer program over at Deer Path and 41. And then secondly, the effect of the athletic field over at, at the rec center. That's another $16 million that was mostly, mostly completed and if you look on your books, on your reports, it'll be in construction in progress. The next one is our activities for revenues. Revenues increased $16 million from government activities and another 1.2 million from business activities. Key drivers in that were grants and contributions increased $8.8 million, but I also want to talk about the fact that the related pension adjustment decreased $2.3 million. Primarily, that is due to the fact that the pension funds had better than budgeted performance returns for '24. The good stuff, pie charts. Where does our revenue come from? Our revenue primarily comes from property taxes, 39% in '24 and 46% in, compared to 46% in 2023. However, that doesn't look good, but it did go up from $33.1 million in '23 to $34.8 million in '24. What caused that? Primarily, it was the increase in grants of 15, that comprised 15% of our, our revenue for the year. And that's that $12.1 million grant from IDOT. Our expenses continued to be mostly personnel, 73% versus 72.5, no big change there for '24 versus '23. Feedback, well, what's good, what's working? Moody's. We continue our AAA rating, our clean audit opinion, financial reporting recognition, which we talked about. The city financial team is, is hitting on all cylinders, plus that, that succession plan I talked about earlier. Opportunities for the committee. We are looking to, to improve on the standard presentation that we have instituted and started in '23. We are now in our year two so that every one of the foundations that comes before us has a standard presentation, both financially and for their business. That way we can learn, we don't have to go through differing reports just to learn about the foundations. And yeah, I think we'll, you'll be very interested over time to see how we improve our, our cybersecurity discussions with, with the city. What's missing? Well, we are going to continue asking our foundations to talk about emerging risks, something we haven't talked about too much in the past. So one of the questions that one of our former chairman always asks is what keeps you up at night as far as the chairman of these foundations go? What we also want to look for is a possibility that the council may come up with some independent type of a review that you may ask the committee to do. So that's our annual report. It will be, will be here again next year and I look forward to your questions. Are there any questions for Mr. Dillon?
I do have one. What are your concerns? What's missing? What are the emerging risks?
Well, for each, for each of our foundations, the risks are obviously different, but the risks obviously for each foundation can be financial. They can be the, how are they looking at who there's, let's take the Senior Citizens Foundation. How is the foundation looking at the needs of Dickinson Hall? And how can they fill those needs? And to what extent should the foundation fill those needs versus the city? And if those needs then all of a sudden become needs that the city can't, can't take care of, or it's not in your purview to take care of, is it in the purview of the foundation to do it? A good example would be the Senior Citizen cottages you guys have been talking about for a while. How much of that will be the foundation? How much of that is the city? How much of that will be other participants? So with every, every group that comes before us, there is a risk. And do, our concern is not that we identify that risk, but do we identify, do we ask, do we find out that they know what those risks are? And can they articulate those risks?
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Comments? No. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this matter? All right. Hearing none, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion from the council to confirm receipt of the audit report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda will be presented by Dan Martin, Superintendent of Public Works. He will be requesting approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award a five-year contract fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 to United Meters for the water meter replacement project utilizing Neptune solid state meters sourced through Ferguson for a cost of $5,693,575. And approve an agreement with Strand Associates for construction engineering services in the amount of $181,425 with a 2% project contingency and the amount of $125,000 for a total project cost of $6 million. Mr. Martin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you very much. Yes, I will make that a briefer than the title. As we've been talking about, the water meter replacement project for some time over the years. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce Brian Hackman with Strand Associations, Associates, who's the project engineer for this. And yeah, so we'll start with a little bit of background. City's current water meter system was installed back in 2004 and we have just under 7,000 water meters. The existing system right now is equipped with a radio read trans receiver where our water and sewer department travels around once a month and reads via the vehicle to gather the usage information on the water billing. Prior to this, prior to the 2004 change, that was quarterly, we would be mailing out the meter card that you'd have to fill in and mail. So you can imagine some of the accuracy with that or the delay as far as what, what we were really selling and getting. So we certainly jumped ahead with the trans receiver method, but as we move forward, our, that current system is, reached its end of the use of life and we're already seeing we've had to take 15% of the meters and replace them, mostly due to failing batteries that are no longer, they're obsolete, they're just no longer available. So we have to remove the whole meter and replace it with a new one. But that said, I think with this program and what we've been able to design by putting a five-year agreement together to get this replacement done, we'll get into, the new AMI system incorporates replacement meters. So from year six to 15 and beyond, as those come through their, their exceeded life, they will be replaced at that time, further spreading out the cost and the project. So as far as what the cost of the impact would be to the water fund. And as we talked about with the trans receiver, knowing that the water meters would need to be replaced coming in the near future, back in 2020, we did have a study put together outlining the available meter technology and opinion, options and their approximate cost. Just to prepare, note what's out there. Modernization, innovation, and technology is definitely something that we wanted to recapture as it was done in 2004 when that system was replaced. The meter study revealed substantial improvements in efficiencies and services by transitioning to a full city water meter replacement utilizing radio frequency advanced meter infrastructure. So no more driving around. These are fixed locations that are antennas that are out there that can receive the data from the residence meters or commercial meters and much, you know, much more frequent information coming in on a constant basis to be able to be read as opposed to the monthly reads. So the other numerous benefits that came with that, I picked out a couple of them is provide a web-based platform for water service customers to review hourly to daily water usage, monthly billing, and receive electronic notifications. This is going to be a huge emphasis as we start with the, replacing the Neptune meters. We will want to make sure that the customers know that this platform is available and strongly recommend they get on board with it because of, most notably, those others are important, but what really what we're looking for is those notifications, those high water usages that are abnormal, that are of what they're usually will get triggered and we can not have to go the full month or more before we identify those as a leak and a high water bill. So that's very, very good in the sense of what we're looking forward to. The other thing is improved data accuracy, accountability, and the integrity of the overall meter system. Meters are collecting demand at a rate that will improve customer response and problem solving compared to today's system. Leaps and bounds, so. AMI project summary, as I mentioned before, it's, we're going to replace, it's from FY25 to FY29. It's a five-year project that we're recommending and average meter replacement would be just over 1,200 meters per year. And as indicated at the last November 7th, 2023 finance budget meeting, we were able to put this out as a five-year meter installation as opposed to the two or three that was recommended at that meeting. So we've accomplished that and very good stay in below budget. So the current FY 2025 budget includes $2 million currently, so to be, we'll begin the project with that and then remaining costs will be budgeted each year from the water utility reserves. You can see here the quick chart that shows the AMI system installation in the middle there. That incorporates the Neptune that was bid out for the water meter replacement. Neptune was the low bid for that. It's plus the United Meters combined, that will do the installation. United Meters will also coordinate, they have a dispatch system, they, they send out the letters, they coordinate all the appointments for the installations. Both vendors came very highly recommended with their references and they're very well-known in the industry, so. And we're very pleased with the favorable pricing for the five-year solution at $6 million, which is below the engineer's opinion cost, so. With that, there's project recommendation that the mayor already read in the subject, but can you answer any questions?
Other questions?
Dan, thanks for the presentation. I know this has been in the works as we've discussed it several times over the last couple of years. My one question is from an installation perspective. Have you guys developed a triage plan? I mean, with 1,200 installations a year, it's, you know, clearly about 100 a month. I'm sure it's weather dependent, but are there specific neighborhoods where you're going to start, where you gain more efficiency and therefore become a little more cost-effective and, and from a labor perspective, or is that to be determined?
It's a little bit to be determined, but a lot of that will come from United Meters. I mean, right out of the gate, we need to get, establish the network that's going to read. So there's going to be approximately 600, hopefully by the end of this fiscal year after we get the antennas reading and the software connected. Then we're going to populate that all over the city in order for Strand and Associates to make sure that all of those devices are connecting properly to and that we have a good, solid network. Before we start putting any more on it, we want to make sure that everything is reading and getting into the city's services properly through the software and the billing. So it's kind of like the, that's our first crawl before we can walk approach. Then the, starting next year, we'll be, probably be around our 1,600 or the 1,400 average. We'll start rolling those out. United Meters and a couple others, the primary, their primary job is this is what they do and they do it very well. They just did Lake Bluffs and they did Deerfield. So they, they go ahead and make sure they have the right amount of installers that are necessary and they send out the letters, they do the dispatching for the appointments with the residents and it's very good. I mean, I've heard nothing but good things. They were actually, as you probably caught in the write-up, were the actual installers back in 2004 for the system that we currently have. They've been at it for a while. So I think that, that's, we feel very confident to know how to roll it out and what's too much and what's not enough and how to involve and communicate with city staff to know where, where to go next.
Great. Thank you.
You know, point of clarification, this really shouldn't be dependent upon weather because these installations are in-home, so consequently, be it 10 below outside or 90, it's, it's not going to be weather dependent. One thing that we did talk about though in the Public Works Committee meeting that I think's worth mentioning is if the council chooses to pass this, we, we probably want to revisit some of our existing policies. You might remember three meetings ago when we had to, we make a point when there are significant water losses due to broken mains or what have you. We had a rather large loss that we had to approve. Future council, this one or next one, should revisit those policies because as these meters do go into place, we should have little or no significant losses moving in the future. So it's either an obsolete policy or a policy that we might want to encourage residents to sign up with that mobile app to make sure that there's a level of mutual accountability. So we won't be put in a position where we have to write off a rather significant water usage loss. So it's, it's working with the community and increasing some water conservation as well as accountability, so. So again, I, I know I had mentioned in Public Works, but my time is short, but it might be something, making sure that we do revisit in the future.
You can tell that one really stuck in his craw.
It was noted.
So just to sort of clarify the software component of this for the residents, so I have a, something called the Flume, which is an add-on to my meter that alerts me if there's certain amount of water use in my property, if I'm out of town or whatever and all of a sudden there's water running. It's, is this something that's part of this system and is it something that the residents will get for free or that they will have to pay for as an add-on? How does that work?
It's part of the system that is currently there as part of that portal. So it's within the meter system. It's not a separate third party at all. There is no fee. It's part of the...
And does it go to their private cell so that they can...
They, they would be a port, portal and set up the notification. So if they're out of town away for the winter, two weeks, if, if, if they're getting a high water usage where they're not supposed to get one, they're going to get notified.
Perfect. Very good. Any other questions?
Dan, how many antennas will be in the city? And what geography do they cover?
We're, we're pretty much piggybacking on most of the emergency siren locations that you have spread out throughout town. So we'll be bringing power to those and those, most of the antennas will be there. And then where there's the tough spots that might not get... And then where there's the tough spots that might not get connected because like up in the northwest part, there's really not a siren location up there. We might have to depend on cellular. So it's kind of a hybrid. But I think there's eight.
About eight.
Yeah.
Okay. And second part of the question is, will the RF be constantly transmitting or will you trigger it to go on and off?
It goes on and off.
It goes on and off every 15 minutes and it's a spread spectrum type radio frequency that is amateur band in the 900, 800, they get hurt strange.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Other questions, comments? Are there questions or comments from the audience? Yes?
Just a couple of quick ones.
Would you like to just come up and otherwise we can't hear you? And if you want, you can state your name and your address.
That'll be over soon, Mayor. Nothing going on. Anyway, thank you so much. Couple of quick questions. With the new technology coming in, there's been some issues with COMED and the, the radiation that comes into our homes now. Is this an additional radiation that's coming in, the EMF technology, or is it just straight frequency? And how can we shield ourselves from any kind of damage from that? So that's one. Two, several of our units are buildings now that are townhouses that were built in the 60s, 70s. The meters are in one unit, but not the other. So is this going to be an opportunity to split the meter so that each unit has its own meter resident? And that may, that may be an off-the-table question, right? And then there's some talk about, you know, shutting things down. If there is excessive usage, will the city shut down the water if they see something's going down?
No, just to make sure they're notified. The radio frequency, I'll let the AMI, the radio operator handle that one.
Yeah, so this, this all falls within the FCC regulation as far as this-
Mind coming up to the podium just so we can get you in the microphone?
So the question on radio frequency and what, what energy is being dissipated here? This is something that is highly regulated by the FCC. This will be a less than one watt transmittance over a, over the range of frequency. So this is spread spectrum. As far as, you know, protection from the house, we can go back to the vendor. We'll ask them about that if there's specific concerns and we're, we're happy to respond to that. For the most part, it is radio frequency. So there is non-ionizing energy that is being spent. It'll be in addition to the COMED meters, which are similar in nature from ITRON perspective. And so from that perspective, it comes down to a policy question as to those who don't want to implement that type of radio frequency at their home. That'll be something that'll be a policy decision that the city council will consider.
We had the one question remaining was the units and spreading them out. So right now, the replacement is we're just going and taking the approach that we're going to replace what is existing. But we would certainly entertain opportunity, but it would be the responsible, the property owner as far as if there was any plumbing that needed to be able to divide those systems in, within there. But we could certainly look into that with the homeowners or the units. If you want to contact me later, we can certainly look into that.
Very good. Are there others? Okay, hearing none, then thank you, gentlemen. We will move on to, let's see.
Need a motion.
Yep. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award a five-year contract fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 29 to United meters for the water meter replacement project utilizing Neptune solid-state meters sourced through Ferguson for a cost of $5,693,575 and approve an agreement with Strand Associates for construction engineering services in the amount of $181,425 with a 2% contingency and the amount of $125,000 for a total project cost of $6 million. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, this would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Excellent. The next item will be presented by Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works. This will be a request for an award of the low bid for the Owani Road area storm sewer improvements project to D'Amio Brothers and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $3,294,990 and a 10% contingency in the amount of $329,499 for a total project cost of $3,624,489.
So move. Sorry. It's a joke. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm standing in for Byron Coots this evening who was homesick, so we wish him well. The Owani Road Storm Sewer Project began with us back in 2013 when we did a storm sewer study of the entire city. We updated that study in 2019 and continue to be a priority project for us. The, the storm sewer, the current storm sewer on Owani Lane, Owani Road is undersized. When we have heavy rains, we'll get anywhere from six to nine inches, especially where Owani Lane and Owani Road meet as well as closer to Deer Path. So the scope of the project is to obviously upsize all the pipes. Difficult to see on the screen, it is for me at least, but Owani Lane and Owani Road, we're going to be upsizing, I believe those are 12s right now, we're going to be tripling them in size going up to 36s. They're both going to dump into a 48 right near Deer Path and then the water goes into that pond adjacent to Fairway 1. In addition, we're going to be putting a second outlet pipe from that pond directly to the creek. Right now, that water comes out of that pond, goes under Deer Path, heads east into the creek, outlet number one. We're going to add outlet number two, a 30-inch that's going to go directly to the creek. That should improve anytime we have heavy, heavy rains where Fairway 1 goes underwater. That, that should minimize the number of times that happens. Could it still happen? Absolutely it could. It, and that's partially what the golf course is there for, is when that creek really fills up, that's what it's there for. Same thing with Lake Bluff. Obviously, our goal is to reduce the flooding and to meet the 10-year storm rate. We're going to be resurfacing Owani Road, Owani Lane as well and doing concrete work, concrete curbs. That is a picture simply looking east directly where we're going to open cut this pipe from the pond directly across. So just to give you an idea of where we're going to be digging. With regards to the project budget, we went ahead and submitted a grant application identical really to the one we did for Baroque to Lake County Stormwater Management two years ago. They liked our project. They put us in what they called Group Three. Baroque was Group One, which all Group One projects were funded. They have heard over the past month or so that they believe they're going to be receiving funding for Group Two, although it's not sure. It's coming from the state. The state, we believe, and they believe is going, they're going to be using ARPA funds, which have to be committed by the end of this calendar year. So we kept calling them, saying, any chance, any luck, anyone's going to bow out, we're ready to go. The answer was no. So we decided because we too are going to be using ARPA funds and we too need to commit those by the end of this calendar year to go ahead and proceed. So with the project budget, $4,345,000 of which, $2,393,000 are the ARPA funds, $1,952,000 are the city funds. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting out on site to show all the contractors, the entire project, how we wanted it sequenced so they clearly understood what we were expecting. We had 19 contractors show up, 14 submitted bids, which in our world is wonderful. And I'm, we're happy to report even better than that, the low bid is D'Amio, John and Mark D'Amio, D'Amio Brothers. D'Amio did the Borough Project and they also did the Water Main on Green Bay recently for us this past August. They're very good. They know what they're doing. Even better yet, with low bid, we had the contingency, we're over $700,000 under budget. So that is a very good thing that goes back into the capital fund. Schedule-wise, if city council approves this this evening, we're actually going to start this project right after the new year. We're going to do that work when the ground is frozen over on the golf course for the months of January, February and toward, to the end of March. We want to get that golf course work done so we can repair the golf course so it's ready for play in the spring. Then the contractor will jump over onto Owani Lane and Owani Road and have that wrapped up by the end of July. So as the mayor read, our request is to approve the contract with D'Amio Brothers, including a 10% contingency. We're going to be overseeing the construction ourselves in-house with Bernard and some of the other guys in water, in engineering, I'm sorry. And with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great project. Glad it's happening. How are you tracking while Owani is shut down, Emerson is shut down?
Yeah, we're, they will, they will start right at Deer Path and Owani Road. They're going to work backwards. So everybody will need to cut through Owani Lane or we're going to have to bring them down Owencia over to Green Bay. And really in the end, we're going to have to work that as, as the project moves along. But that is one of the reasons we want to try and get this work done on the golf course and do the, the work on the roadway when Peter Baker opens up. Now, they're not going to pave this until the very end, but at least we can get patch material to temporarily, temporarily open up lanes.
Good. Other questions or thoughts?
I, I just have a comment. You know, I think this project really exemplifies what the city does well, including city council. This is coming in at $721,000 under budget, but who's counting? And that clawback goes back into our capital fund. So that speaks to our conservative budgeting through the finance department, the various department heads. But I want to take this step of fur, take this one step further, looking at the input from the residents that we have. Part of our strategic plan, we have a new strategic plan that we adopted a month ago with very little pomp and circumstance, but if we looked at the strategic plan that we just passed and the previous ones, they were bullet points over the previous decade, stormwater management. And I think what we have seen through the actions of city council and mayor, this is going back to your time as an alderman, prioritizing those things and dealing with Deer Path 41 underpass, dealing with Baroque, dealing with those various other projects. We have been checking the boxes as we go and really from a fiscal perspective in a very responsible manner. So again, input from residents is critical for us if we're to address those issues that are important to them. But although now we're using infrastructure rather than stormwater management, because I think that is a broader concern, but we've really targeted those more specific issues. And this is again, another example of how well staff and council and our finance department has, have really worked to address those priorities that the residents have. So I feel good that stormwater management is not a single bullet point now on our strategic plan. Broader infrastructure is. And again, because of work like this and again, coming under budget, you know, again, and allowing us to spend those revenues, the revenue elsewhere, those funds elsewhere, I think is really wonderful. So, you know, we had talked about it in Public Works Committee. Again, this is a great thing and, and having D'Amio Brothers do this job, especially having watched what they've done previously, I feel really, really good about it. So again, my hat's off to the Public Works Department and then finance also and, and really to the residents for identifying those issues for us. So thank you, MT.
Thank you.
Yep. And I would add that all this has been done to a very measurable effect as well in terms of, you know, stormwater events that we have. So kudos. Anyway, so thank you. This time I'm going to ask for a motion to, do I have to read this again? Okay. Award the low bid for the Owani Road area storm sewer improvements project to D'Amio Brothers Incorporated and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $3,294,990 and a 10% contingency in the amount of $329,499 for a total project cost of $3,624,489. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Clements?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration of which there are 12. So if there is anybody who would like to have any of these removed or taken separately, please let me know after I complete my reading of the above items. Item one, approval of the October 7th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the check register for the period of September 28th through October 25th, 2024. Item three, determination of a non-binding estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2024 calendar year and establishment of December 2nd, 2024 as a public hearing date if required in accordance with the truth in taxation statute. Item four, approval of VM backup and recovery software solution and ExaGrid hardware with a three-year maintenance from Heartland Business Systems in the amount of $66,935. Item five, approval to waive the bid process and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Havy Communications for a new squad car upfitting and squad car realignment equipment and services for $106,752.60 with a 3% contingency for a total of $109,955.18. Item six, authorization of a contractual agreement for Recreation Department pickleball instruction in the amount of $84,367. Item seven, approval to waive the bid process and approve a purchase of a replacement streets section truck in the amount of $120,000 and the trade-in of the current 2005 streets section truck as surplus property in the amount of $10,000 to Kune's Auto Group. Item eight, approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation to waive competitive bid requirements and authorize the city manager to execute an advanced materials contract for the Deer Path Streetscape project with cold spring in the amount of $337,550. Item nine, approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation to approve a change order for additional phase two design engineering services to Thomas Engineering Group for the Deer Path Streetscape project in the amount of $29,925. Item 10, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the building review board for 270 Majestic Oak Court, first reading if desired by the council, final approval. Item 11, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a tentative plot approval for a four-lot subdivision Saunders Place, approval by motion. And finally, item 12, consideration of a special use permit amendment, donation agreement, maintenance agreement and third amendment to the operating agreement associated with a land donation from the Lansing family to the city of Lake Forest to complete the garden at the Ragdale Campus, 1230, 1260 and 1271 North Green Bay Road, approval by motion and if desired by the city council, waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance. Are there any items that the aldermen would like removed or taken separately?
Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in for just a moment, I just wanted to note that as you saw in your packet, there are several requests included on the omnibus agenda that do call for a waiver of the city's competitive bidding processes. And I just wanted to speak to, to it for a minute to acknowledge that while these requests are generally infrequent for us, there are occasional circumstances where either unique project or purchase timing, highly specialized services, or when products have gone through other governmental entities, joint purchasing cooperatives that do lead city staff to make these requests. But I wanted to provide assurance to the council and the community that even in circumstances where these requests come forward, that city staff conducts thorough reviews of all the pricing obtained to ensure that, that, that all the services are fairly priced. So just wanted to acknowledge that because there were several of them included on tonight's omnibus agenda and feel- omnibus agenda, and feel very confident that, again, the best pricing's been obtained.
Very good. All right. So if there are no items to be removed or taken separately, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the twelve omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
All righty. The next item is old business, of which there is none this evening, followed by new business, of which there is none this evening. So at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any additional items that the council would like to discuss at this time. Okay. Hearing none. We will be moving on to an executive session. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to five ILCS one twenty slash two C. The city council will be discussing specific personnel.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Very good. And there will be no additional items discussed at the completion of executive session.